I've been after John for thirty years to bring this.
Okay, we did better than I thought we'd do. I promise you, we tried to make eight-thirty, no later than quarter or nine, and it's ten minutes to nine, so.
From the last part of it, I'm sorry.
Claudia, you mentioned to me that you have something you want to say to the board.
I just wanted to ask and remind the board that I assume we will all be as collegial and polite to each other as possible.
You're being recorded.
Good.
What's before the board is there's two promised agendas with the town manager and the chairman of the selectmen. One is to discuss the patent RFP, and the other is to discuss the planning director position. Open for grabs, which do you want to do first?
Let's do the planner.
Yes, let's do the planner first. Do the planning position.
Things are, when it comes to the patent, if you have a patent RFP, I have some discussion reports about restructuring.
What are we doing first?
The planning position.
So the planning department starts.
I'd send an email out to you all with copies of the proposed job description for full-time planning, director of planning and inspections, as well as an organizational chart that identifies the departmental restructuring that will accompany that. And I'm hoping, I haven't received really much by way of content feedback, and I'm hoping tonight, if you have thoughts on the position or questions, that I'm able to answer them for you.
Do you want to make a presentation of what your vision is, just so it's coming from your mouth and we're not interpreting it potentially incorrectly?
Sure, I can do that. Each of the land use functions upstairs, or health department is certainly broader than land use, but with regard to Title V, and then all of the other staff, report to me in addition to all the other department heads. It's far too many direct reports. There are silos when it comes to working together and working through projects, and we really, I think, given the level of activity and I think the projects that are going on, I think we'd be served far better by having a full-time director that can shepherd these efforts. So, all of the land use functions, the CONSCOM, the inspections, all of the functions that you see on that will report to this director, who then would report to me. The position would still serve the planning board's functions and support. I think it'll be enhanced by having additional staff that can help do additional research, help coordinate meetings and agendas. So it provides a depth of staffing that, you know, we simply don't have right now because of the individual silos that everybody is in. So it's meant to provide a level of coordination and depth that I think will make our planning efforts far more robust, and I think it'll help serve the boards and committees with a lot more expertise and staff time to be able to attend to your needs.
Can I ask a question about the additional staff you're thinking about? Because in the org chart, it really doesn't show any staff supporting anything, mostly the functional headings that you have.
Right, they all report to the department director, so the director can assign responsibilities and functions, can coordinate their work and leverage, you know, right now they work in discreet, separate silos. The thought is that they would be cross-trained, particularly the administrative assistants would be cross-trained. I've had a conversation with Jim Henkin, he has indicated that he has untapped capacity to help do additional research, and he's quite interested in lending his expertise. You know, Jim is an attorney as well, is our conservation agent, and so he would be able to assist in working through various projects and research.
When the planning coordinator position was crafted thirty-five years ago, it was because subdivision plans were coming in quite numerous before the board, the planning board, and it needed input from every other department of the town, mostly from public health, public works, as to the road layouts and so forth, the wetlands, the CONSCOM, and all these different elements of land use had to sign off and approve the plan, and that wasn't happening. So we created Candace Wheeler's job, which was the planning coordinator, and she was a soil specialist and so forth. It's evolved over time such that we really, at least until Christine came, needed a planning coordinator just to manage a lot of the activities of the planning board. When I read the job description, which I'm very much in favor of many of the things that you described there, and I'm definitely in favor of the coordination function that you're talking about, but it seems as though the planning board will be stripped of anyone to process applications, because the planning director is going to be up here in the stratosphere dealing with long-run visions for the town, pushing projects forward, coordinating, you know, a whole lot of things which are really critical to your agenda. But the applicants, the applications like a senior housing bylaw application, a special permit, I think as the market warms up, we're going to see further subdivisions, not large ones necessarily, but smaller ones, and a lot of processing. And that processing is a full-time job, and the coordination of all the different sign-offs that have to go on each of those kinds of applications.
I would disagree, that's a full-time job, it's half-time now, and...
And we don't get the things done that we want to, that's the problem. There's many more things than what we would like to see done, because we have a master plan function, we have downtown functions through the HDC, the patent land process and so forth, it's gotten sort of pulled off by the selectmen and pushed off on the side, but not doing the kinds of creative things that we think we could do, and many other CDC kinds of functions and so forth. So I think the planning board really is trying to do planning, but it can't, because it doesn't have any staff really of its own.
Well, we have, I mean, we're not large enough to have department directors, organ town manager for that matter, who get to work solely in the stratosphere. That would be wonderful. We have working managers who roll up their sleeve day-to-day and push a lot of paper and, you know, are hands-on in terms of project management, and this position primarily, you know, is meant to provide the full support to the planning board that you need. It'll have the depth of staff, not all of this will be...
Well, that's the part I was hooking on first. You said depth of staff, so if we have one or two people...
Can I complete my sentence? You have two administrative assistants, and you have other staff that will be available to assist the director as they need to, whether it be for preparing for plan review. My hope is, when we get the director on board, one of the first things they're going to identify is that our plan review process is disjointed, and that, you know, we can streamline that and get everybody working together very fluidly. That will, I think, create a lot of time, I know Christine spends a tremendous amount of time just working with individuals to prepare packages, because some of the other silos, when they're responsible for the primary piece of it, they are willing to push applications forward that are incomplete, and it creates a lot of friction and difficulty moving those projects through the process, and keeping you all informed, like when the ZBA has various things that they're discussing. So, you know, this position will serve the planning board, if in their analysis, once they restructure and work through some of the streamlining that additional staffing is needing, we can certainly talk about that. I don't believe that to be the case unless we have a tremendous upswing in development, but primarily we'll rely on, you know, the person who's responsible for leading that department to make those recommendations based on the workload. I think there is a considerable amount of untapped capacity up there. I know from being up there almost on a daily basis that there are considerable amount of staff, I won't say idleness, but their time is not necessarily fully utilized, and I think with somebody to guide and shepherd them on a daily basis, there's a lot more that we can take on up there than what is presently affordable.
Can you explain who you're talking about upstairs? I don't know who you're talking about.
I'm talking about, I mean, everybody but the finance director and her staff. You're talking the buildings, you're talking of the...
But that's not a plan, I'm talking about as a planning board. You know, we're an autonomous board, I don't know who the people are, the only person I reference is Christine as the planning coordinator, so who are you talking about upstairs that would be involved in some way in?
It's on the organization chart, the administrative assistants.
But how does that affect this director of planning and inspections? How does that interface happen?
They're there to provide administrative support, additional research, help coordinate meetings.
Who's "they"? Them?
The two administrative assistants, Deb Paskowski and Nancy Stevens presently.
How would...
And who are they working for now?
They currently work for Board of Health and Buildings, but they're cross-trained...
And they would start working for the planning board?
Beg your pardon?
They would start working for the planning board?
They work for the town of Hamilton.
But you don't have any sense of what the planning board does.
I don't have anything to say with regard to your statutory authority, and nor do I expect to, but with regard to staff, they do all report to the town manager, and so I want to make that distinction, that this is not, you know, the staff is not assigned solely to the planning board, not even now.
No.
Can I make a comment here?
Go ahead, Ron.
For me, it's, you know, it's a sense of emphasis, that, you know, I told you, frustration for me is some things like the pool project, or, you know, even the patent project, we get updates. There are a lot of these land use boards, which it would be nice to have somebody who was actually reporting to us to tell us what's going on with all the land use issues, rather than us being one of the land use issues that is being taken apart by this coordinator that's out there. In other words, I think it's important as a planning director to work with the planning board to coordinate all those land use issues, as opposed to us just being sort of one area.
If done well, they should be working with all of the land use boards and the Board of Selectmen.
But that's not being done now, it doesn't sound...
Exactly so.
Doesn't sound like it will be the real character either.
That's what he wants.
Yeah, so what, may I...
One at a time, please. Mike.
May I, Mr. Chairman? Since 2004 master plan, it's been identified that to do the proper long-term planning, to have the time and perspective to look at a larger view of not just our downtown, but how it sits in there, to look at our bylaws, you need to have a larger perspective. And so it was identified early on that, you know, to plan our way forward, we needed more than just a part-time planning coordinator. And that's sort of been on a wish list, and then it finally became on a, you know, a budget list, and then finally we got a town manager, and then finally it was on a budget, so we finally actually approved it as a town to fund it. We just didn't create the director position, because at the time we weren't even conceiving of director position.
It was established through a warrant, that's why it got funded.
Yes.
The position was already funded.
The position's already funded, it's funded through a budget.
The department director, the Department of Planning and Inspection Services was not created yet, because, you know, all these pieces had to come in place. What we've seen over the years are things like where the planning board makes recommendations, the zoning board doesn't necessarily follow through, you'll see them at the, you know, all the shopping center stuff, the golf center stuff, you see holes between the planning board and the conservation commission. You know, everybody's doing their statutory piece, but they're all individualized, and so the idea was to say, you know, if we can get a planning director who is touching base with each of these pieces, each doing their statutory thing...
That's what I say, I think it's not, I don't disagree with you. But what I'm saying is it's a matter of emphasis, that that person should be helping the planning board to come to terms with all those other land uses, as opposed to just reporting to the town manager.
So that person, in this planning board's working relationship with that person, that person will know what else is happening in, you know, in the various departments, and will be able to communicate that as just part of their regular ongoing dialogue. What happens now is, you know, the conservation commission, you know, Jim reports to Michael, Deb Paskowski reports to Michael, you know, you have, you know, all these people, and you know, they don't always communicate everything they're doing up, and therefore when Michael speaks to Jim Henkin or someone else, he doesn't necessarily take what Deb said and pass it back along.
And conversely, the last time we spoke to you was about a year ago, so if all the information's going to Michael, that's great, but we need to get some interaction.
Well, that's the whole idea of having a planning director, is to plug in, coordinate, have the perspective, and guess what, after doing this for six months to a year to eighteen months, you guys will beat this person's head silly and sort of train them to look at things the way you want to train them, and other people will have an influence, and over time, this position will gain a perspective, say, you know what, how about we all go this way? You know, recommend bylaws in this direction, you know, whatever recommendations come out of the position, it'll be through a history of a working relationship of working with each of you. Now, I don't know that one board's more important than the other, but...
No, no, that's not really...
But there's, excuse me, there's a red flag there, because we are, by statutory, we are independent board who make decisions about subdivisions and special permits and so forth. The way this chart is structured, this director of planning and inspections is answering to the town manager.
It does.
And that makes it less autonomous for us to be dealing with, when you say coordinates the subdivision process, coordinates blah blah blah, coordinates, you know, there's nothing, there's nothing on the ground helping us the way she helps us, A, and B, it is uncomfortable that this position is answering to the town manager and not, and there's some, there's something not statutory about that.
Let me address that first, and maybe it's not evident, because I don't interfere with the board's statutory obligations and responsibilities, but Christine reports to me, just as this position will report to me, so I, you know, maybe...
What does she report to you?
She pays her salary.
What do you mean by the word report?
I supervise the planning coordinator.
You supervise that she doesn't come in drunk to work, I understand that.
Yeah, we've got a problem there.
But if there are conflicts with work or projects, she would seek my guidance. If there's a dispute with you all that she needs guidance on, she would come and talk to me. If she was asked to do something that she was uncomfortable with, or that was outside of the bounds of her responsibilities, whatever they may be, she would come and talk to me and seek my guidance and advice as her supervisor. So, I mean, when she's serving the planning board in terms of preparing for your plan reviews and walking you through, you know, whatever statutory functions you're focused on, you know, she's able to do that independently, and that doesn't require my input on, and it works, and you all have a close relationship and are able to set your agendas and have your meetings without my interference.
Michael, look at your plan. You've got the town planner down here, director of planning inspection services, reporting to you, and it has no functional relationship with us at all.
No, it has, the dotted line is meant to be the strong, the working relationship with the planning board.
But this, you've taken our staff person and made them the director of planning, you haven't said, in addition, we're going to have a planning coordinator, because under subdivision plan, we have to patch around all those things. You saw the special permit tonight, the application, it's going to take probably eight to ten weeks to review and have outside engineers work on.
So if there's an emphasis to the work that you want to describe, provide that to me, and I'll synthesize it, but this position is meant to provide you the same level, if not more, support than what the planning coordinator position does.
I have a plan, I'll bring it to you.
I don't think that this...
Frankly, I think all the functions, you can, you can take over in just a minute. The inspection and the big picture with the HDC of the future of the downtown, and some of those things which the town planner may be focusing on, and looking at future development projects, like the incubator at the town dump and things like that, those are going to be really important. We have to raise financing, we have to make changes in land use and so forth, but the general process in which we coordinate through subdivision control and CONSCOM reviews and open space preservation, and working on the road specifications for the subdivisions, the public health review of the septic plans that are part of our land use plans and so forth, and then we have a review by the fire department and the police department of each of these plans, that runaround, the town planner's not going to do that for us.
They absolutely won't.
No. Well, then how can he do the job you want of looking to the future?
Can we stop the argument here, please? As Claudia said, we ought to be having a civil discussion, so let's not be attacking the town manager, he has a plan on the table, let's deal with the real issue. What I hear from you and other people on this board is the fear that the planning board is going to lose an important resource that is dedicated to focusing on technical assistance and administrative support to the planning board.
Well, that's one component.
That's one component.
If you take this list...
Stop, stop, stop.
That is one part of it.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to get, let me get clear, would you please let me...
Okay, I'm just asking you, be concrete, because here is the specification of his job.
Would you please let me finish?
Okay, but he can't do those things.
That's your opinion, so just hold on. So I'm trying to distill what the concerns of the planning board are, rather than going around in a circular...
We understand that.
Okay, so, do I have that correct? One primary concern of the planning board is a loss of support of a dedicated person to administrative and technical support to the planning board, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
And let me just ask the question, is your proposal to bring this person in and get rid of Christine?
Christine is free to apply for this position.
Yes, to get rid of her.
There's one planning director position.
All right, so in other words, the new planning director would come in, and the person holding Christine's position would be eliminated?
Christine's position would be, the planning coordinator's position would be eliminated, and Christine was well aware of this ongoing when she was hired into the position, this is not new service.
To us it is.
Well, my concern isn't vis-à-vis Christine, although I will tell you, she does a marvelous job. I'm just trying to get the format of what you're talking about here. Structurally, you're speaking, you're bringing in a new person and eliminating this person, but you'd be dovetailing her job into this other job.
Elevating this position to a full-time director's position and adding the oversight of the other various departments and functions.
So is the, is the, is the director of planning and inspection services going to take minutes and do all the work that she, the grunt work that she does?
Right, well, I think that's a very good...
And I don't think that the way this job is described...
In budget, you prove the minutes person.
No, no, you, yeah.
It's been there, actually, you prove it every year, you spend thousands of dollars for it.
I hate to give you credit, but you do much more than minutes.
I know, but I'm saying, actually, along with your budget, you have money, and therefore a minutes taker, most of the boards all do as backup.
Your minutes will be taken and provided to you, that's not, none of that is going to go away.
Let me ask you a question about that, though, because when she comes here to do the minutes, she actually does a lot more, because she has a tremendous amount of knowledge about what we do. So if you're thinking that the director would come in and take minutes, that's one thing, or if you're thinking about the director would, you know, appoint someone from upstairs, so to speak, to come in and handle the minutes, that would be a very different impact on the kind of board.
They would, the director would be at your planning board meetings, and there would be somebody to take your minutes. If the planning director believes because they're, he or she is here, and they want to take the minutes, you know, I'll leave that to them. I think, you know, you would want this person to work at a level that was appropriate and not be a minute taker, but they can, you know, that person can decide that. If they have somebody that is adept at taking minutes, that person will, you know, run the summary by the planning director and get input, and then send it off to you for the, much like Christine does now, for your input. I don't...
I understand your structure, and that's what I just want to make sure I understood this for.
I think it's important that the planning director would be at all your meetings, you know, it's not, it's not, they would send someone, it's, the planning coordinator is an integral part to this position.
I was thinking the same thing. If he comes, this person comes to that, this meeting, and comes to all the other board meetings that are reporting to them, won't have any time to do the planning that we want.
Not meant to.
That's what I agree, I would agree, he shouldn't come to the meetings.
This position, and I've said it, and I try to articulate in here, primary purpose is to support the planning board and to lead planning efforts. Jim is capable and does a wonderful job serving the CONSCOM. Nancy, for Leslie Whalen, does a fantastic job supporting the Board of Health and attending their meetings. The ZBA presently does not have staff support at the meetings, that's a problem, and I would look to this person to help find a solution to that, whether it's through reorganizing and changing the positions that are under there. I see additional changes down the road to the construct of these other positions, because we're too small of an organization to have all these silos with people who are, at times, underutilized. So, you know, foremost, I need a managing director that can come in and evaluate where our strengths and opportunities are as an organization, and how to reallocate and reassign staff to help meet those needs. And it may be that they suggest we need another half-time position, or presently what's a full-time position is changed to something less, that, I don't have the time to do that, that workflow analysis and workload analysis. I would look to this director, after having been here for a period of, and observing and understanding how this all should work, to make those recommendations for me.
I looked at, when we were looking at town planner, and sort of, and I, you know, I've had experience in Vermont with town planners, and, you know, there are town planners available, the town planner, as I would describe it, in terms of the needs of this small town, that you could get for a lot less than eighty thousand dollars a year. So this is a very expensive town planner. This is more than, you can get a town planner for thirty-five thousand dollars a year, so I'm just...
Not if you want them to do the high-level planning that we expect them to.
Well, I, this is, I go back to you, Michael, as town manager... Well, I, this is, I go back to you, Michael, as town manager, this is a small town. So we already have a very expensive town manager and now we're going to have a very expensive director of planning for a town with seven thousand people in it. So there are ways to spend less money on a town planner if it were just a town planner. And that town or planner would do research. So I can say to her, "Can you check out how they did the downtown planning in Lincoln or Concord?" And she does her homework. I don't, I'm not sure that this person will do that.
So it would actually be a lot cheaper to have a town, from a town perspective, you know, we're looking at leveraging Michael because he has a span of probably eighteen people that report to him, maybe, maybe, maybe more. And so from the town's perspective, we're looking at, you know, can we find a way to leverage him and get more out of, out of Michael without sacrificing? So what we don't want to do is get an assistant town manager, right? Because we, you know.
Michael might want.
I might disagree with that.
Yeah, but from, I haven't heard any support at our board for that, for that, for that level position. So we're trying to get efficiency out of, out of Michael. And one of the natural ways to do that is to beef up this position to be able to handle more people reporting to them, giving Michael more capacity. That would also have the benefit of the increased synchronization with everything else that's happening. And, you know, that flows back to you guys. Now, I think the very legitimate observation that you have a job description and a set of hours and a process-intensive position, you know, that part is not in the job description. So that, it's referenced in the job description, but it's not, it's not as beefed up as it, as it could be.
I wrote a bunch of comments, a lot of comments, on the eight different functions on the front. And a lot of them overlap with the kind of work that Christine does. And I think if you look at the expansion of responsibility that Michael's bred into these things, that would become a full-time planning job. On the other hand, the coordination of all inspections and the clerk of the work job, going out and kicking the tires and a lot of other very technical, public health issues and so forth, I don't think are, should be on the same agenda. And that's why I made a two, two-echelon list, which I'll send to Michael, where I tried to put all the regular, all the inspection-type things here on one side and the, looking at technical issues like doing the wetland edge of the water and a lot of other kinds of technical things. But then the visioning plans and the processing and the regulatory side, I think that's a full-time job. And I doubt that a town planner, as I understand what a town planner is supposed to be, looking at the next decade and working with the HDC about implementing new bylaws for the downtown and so forth. You can't do that and handle, you know, Cantor Brook and all the A&Rs and all the other things that are coming across our desks.
Within a few short months, I would suppose, maybe even sooner if we, you know, if the person is ready for the job and, you know, embraces it fully, the level of coordination amongst the others is really just redesigning process so that it, that it flows and that, and the level of coordination is not as deep as you would think. You know, the buildings department and our inspectors are able to serve the ZBA. It just needs to be integrated with the rest of the town and what's going on. With regard to the Board of Health, the only direct influence is coordinating the plan review for Title V. But with the Board of Health functions, Leslie Whalen, that's still handled by Leslie. This is not shifting the burden of the Board of Health on this position. This is coordinating the pieces that are, that are important for the land use functions to come together and work together properly. And I'm expecting to hire somebody with the management background and the desire to really, you know, make some changes up there for this all to come together. It's going, it's going to shake things up a fair amount upstairs because of the, but there's not a, they don't require a lot of hand-holding and management when it comes to serving their boards. It's just coordinating in the middle for, for all the things that frustrate you all when we have, you know, canopies going up at the golf station that you weren't really, you know, as deeply involved in on the front as you should. So this is not meant to supplant the, Jim and his involvement with the CONSCOM or Leslie and her involvement with the Board of Health. It's meant to coordinate the pieces that make sense. And then, you know, when there are broader organizational or staff issues, that's when they appeal to me and I get involved. Because ultimately, the staff that would report to this person on a day-to-day basis still remain responsible to me through the Board of Selectmen, but it's the level of coordination day-to-day that I'm looking for assistance with. So it frees up my time to be able to spend more time working on the bigger issues with the planning board and the Board of Selectmen and all the other boards and the community.
If the administrative assistants are being underutilized, isn't that just a matter of management there?
That's the whole point.
Yeah, the point is that they're, they're managed to.
In other words, can't you reassign them to some of the other?
No, because they're individual silos right now. I need, I need to bring them together under one common banner, if you will, to be able to make any other changes that make sense.
But that is, that's a town managing issue. I want to go back to planning. We are, we are an elected board, we are autonomous from you and you don't set policy for us. And yet, this job, it says drafts new and revises zoning and subdivision regulations. Now, that, then why do you have a planning board?
What, do you, I mean, would not, in this situation now, Christine help draft language for you all?
Well, I don't know with this person, we don't, this person is, is under you on the org chart. So is he, this person, he or she draft, we draft them, we do it.
With the staff assistants.
She helps us, she doesn't do it, we do it.
So, so you all sit at your computer and do your research and you draft the language yourselves?
And we talk about it and then we give it to her.
Right. I would suggest that in my experience with Christine and Marcy before is staff do a lot of the preliminary drafting and send it out to you for all for review and response. And it's coordinated that way. That doesn't change.
And we hold public hearings and we get the public input.
None of that changes.
Can I, can I, you know, because we have two members of the board that are really voicing a great deal of concern here, which is legitimate. But I think what would, might help ease that concern is if we can get the assurance from Michael and Mark that this new director of whatever we're calling him, planning, her, him, planning and inspection, will provide equal or more intensive support to the planning board. What I'm hearing is the fear that somehow the planning board is losing, A, its autonomy and B, its technical and administrative support at the level we currently enjoy. So I know planning board members would like to have a dedicated, full-time planning person. That's not on the table and that's not really realistic for this town of this size. You're not going to get a real planning person for thirty-five thousand. You might get it for fifty, you might get it for sixty, but not in this economy and not in this region. So what we, what I want to hear is that we get the assurance that we get the equivalent support, technical skills of a Christine or better.
I never said we have to have a full-time town planner.
No, 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 there are other members.
I just want to be clear about that.
I didn't say you.
You know, this is not exactly Danvers.
One more time, please, Claudia, go ahead and speak.
I hadn't.
I want to be clear.
I gave Claudia the permission to speak.
I want to be clear that I don't.
You want to be quiet until she speaks.
And I didn't suggest that we necessarily needed a full-time planner, but, and, and, and that I think it's affordable to have some kind of a planner. And, and, and I think Christine has done a terrific job.
Right.
So, yes, I'd hate to see that go away, and it's going to go away.
Well, what did I just say to the team?
I know what you said, but I haven't heard anybody saying, "Oh, by the way, we've got Christine too."
Could we have a response?
I, you know, this position is meant to provide for your needs as fully as what the planning coordinator does now and more. I don't know how, if, if this job description, and that's the content that I've been asking you to provide me, is if, if there are different things or you'd like to add or modify, send me the language and I will take a look at it and see how to incorporate it.
No, that's fine.
If the, if the title is not, you know, to our liking, for the, you know, I, we can call it whatever we like. I, you know, if you have a better suggestion that encompasses the broad tasks. I'm not weighted to Director of Planning Inspections, you know, but I'm one man, you know, sitting at a computer for far too many hours at times. And this is what I came up with and I circulated it for feedback. And to date, I've not gotten a lot in terms of the content. I've gotten a lot of fears and trepidations about things that are, that really should not be a concern.
No, I understand, but we, but all of us, whether you're in the public or private sector, know people love change about as much as a tooth being extracted with no painkiller. So people react to change with fear. What, how is my ox going to survive this potential goring? So what I'm trying to get past this fear, because that's what I hear, is a fear and concern that the board, planning board is, A, going to lose its autonomy or its ability to exercise its planning role and function because it will not be adequately supported on a technical or administrative basis. Does that pretty much sum up what the fear is here?
Well, no, I, all on, go ahead.
You have it.
No, I, you know, look, I'm sorry, but I'm a lawyer, so words matter to me. And so when I see at the top, it says the director is responsible for planning and coordination of planning, that seems like we would be working for this person. And then down below, it says supervises and supervises and directs planning. So it seems like they'd be supervising us. Coordinates land use planning and zoning policies and procedures. Again, it sounds, you know, the verb, the way it's written anyway, sounds like, like they're, you know, we're working for them, they're telling us what to do. And then on the second page, it's the same thing. Coordinates planning and conducts special studies and prepares recommendations related to variety of planning and zoning issues. So I think, I think I understand what you're talking about, but it doesn't quite match the language that I read on this.
I think you read into the language. Do you, as a lawyer, do you think that anything can compromise the board's, planning board's statutory authority under the law or under our bylaws?
No, but that's not, actually.
No, I do.
But that's clearly not really what I'm, what I'm thinking of right now because if you bring someone in and there's this actually describing their position and they're hired and they, they do what the description says in fairness to them, then there could be some kind of juxtaposition between us and them. So my suggestion would be, because you're looking for feedback, I'm just looking for feedback, would, would be to indicate that they, they're subservient to us. They do what we ask to do. And to the extent that they do something more, they do it at our oversight. Something like that, you understand what I'm talking about?
But not solely. I mean, you know, we all have a stake in community planning and visioning, you know, and, and this position is meant to bring us all together so that we're pointing to the same point on the horizon instead of maybe, you know, a parallel path to a different destiny.
Then maybe the language is, I'm just picking this out of the, they, they make suggestions or something like that. But, but the way this is written, it just sounds like they're doing the planning job support. I think I understand what you're talking about. I'm just suggesting that the language, and, and, look, it's never easy to draft one of these things. So I, I fully respect your effort and all that. I, I don't mean to suggest that I'm being hypocritical and that, but just, I would change the wording if it were me.
If you have specific recommendations, I, you know, shoot it, I'd appreciate some assistance because, you know, again, I don't have, you know, this is me, you know, sitting at, typing this up. And, you know, if there's, just, if you highlight certain areas and, you know, it's easier if I'm visual and, you know, I, I just want to make sure I capture your comments. So if you can just shoot me a brief email, that would, that would capture that, that would be very helpful to me.
Okay, yeah, great. Maybe the board could meet and discuss it. I mean, I've got the language, I'd like to hear Jeff's language, I'd like to hear Claudia's language so that we can try and put the concepts more effectively. Rick has helped stretch my understanding because I, I read down here all the things that you attributed to the responsibilities of the new town planner as usurping most of the responsibilities that we have currently. Rick says, "No, it's really going to be a bigger planning department." And, but where you write, "Coordinates the subdivision process to assure that commitments and deadlines are met, reviews or supervises the review of subdivision plans and applications for compliance, serves," that's what we asked Christine to do and then report to us. And then we hold a detailed negotiation with an applicant and reach decisions and take votes and so forth. And I don't see the planner as being the person who comes in here to take votes with us or supervises and tells us when we can do this or not do it. But it sounds like he reports to you and, and rather than, because my org chart says, developers and citizens make applications through a process that we have established. And they don't apply to the town planner.
The position does report to me. And, but, but again, that, that does not mean that all of a sudden now I'm in your statutory business. I don't do it now, I don't intend to in the future. I've got far too many other things that keep me busy and awake at night. So, so, let me, let me go on, please. So, I, I mean, if I didn't capture as robustly the planning board's functionality and what you, you, you know, expect in a position such as this, then that's what I, I'd like to hear that and be provided your notes and copies of it so that we can, we can fine-tune this. But this position is meant to serve the planning board and, and all of the, the plan review needs and all of that preparation. And then I'm hoping, because I think I've had this conversation with several of you, we want somebody with the skills and the, and the, the experience to help lead us through tighter planning initiatives. To, you know, we have to decide what they are. I've been, for four years, asking for community visioning and strategic planning process. And I don't know that we're any more closer to it today than we were four years ago. It would be nice to have somebody on board that can work more closely with the various boards and committees, with me, with the Board of Selectmen, to help articulate and identify why it's important, how we could accomplish that together so that, you know, we are looking to the future, we are planning. And then in even evaluating, once we get there, do our bylaws help us in that journey or hinder us? I think we want somebody with that level of capacity, knowledge, training and skills, not just somebody to, to, you know, wait for the planning board to tell them what to do on a day-to-day basis. If that's not the, if that's not the case, if that's what you're looking for, then, then, you know, I'm, I'm not inclined to beef up the planning's position. I, you know, if we, if we just want staff support and you want it more robustly, then I agree. But my understanding of the needs of this town and through several of you is that we're looking for somebody with the capacity to help us plan for the future.
I completely support your vision.
That's a way that we'll do it this way.
I appreciate everything you said. It's been very helpful for me to hear you.
Can I make a suggestion? Just for the purpose of timing and efficiency, Jeff, can we, would you volunteer sort of be the hub of this and take the comments of board members and synthesize something that you think represents the position and then you can circulate it to the board for comment? Because otherwise, we've just got seven people going around in circles.
I think he has to synthesize it and send it out. I don't know if he can synthesize it and send it back to you unless it's in a public meeting.
Well, I'll be honest, I mean, I'll be honest with you. This is, this has been a very helpful portion of the meeting for me because I have a great understanding of what you guys are suggesting. I don't pretend to be an expert on what it is you're suggesting because I've been trying to process this as I went through it. And the reason is because my, my knowledge base was as low as it was. So do I think I can create something that exemplifies what you want? No. But can I change or provide at least my concerns about the wording? Yes. And if you took those, maybe you'd do a better job than I would of recasting it.
No, I'm happy to rewrite. I, again, I just need the feedback of the areas of concern and the duties and functions that you don't believe are captured as robustly. And I'm. that you don't believe are captured as robustly, and I'm, I'm happy to, you know, spend some time revising this. That's, that's the feedback I've been looking for, that was the intent of my email, was to, you know, get that dialogue going.
So I think we actually have enough based on the feedback that we've had so far, to have another draft, of another substantive draft.
I'd like to make sure that all their comments are captured and sent to me, so that-
That's why I was asking if Jeff, understanding you feel the limitations of not being a professional planner, but you are a professional wordsmith. If we have-
No, I'm a lawyer.
I, I smith the words when I understand the concept.
No, I understand, I understand, but I think you're underestimating your capabilities here.
I'm happy to take a stab and-
So, what I'm suggesting is, if we have specific comments on that language, that we could submit them to you, and then you could submit them back to the town manager, so we're not throwing different words, language versions, so there's an efficient coordinated process.
Isn't that more appropriate for Christine to be doing?
Well, let me ask you this, what if, what if we, what if I get these things and I come up and, and, I mean, what's your timeframe on this, guys? I mean, when do you need this done?
I mean, I, I would like to get this launched before town meeting, certainly.
So you need it by?
April 6th's town meeting, I would like to have this at least posted in March.
All right, so we're meeting again in two weeks.
Yeah. I, I, I don't, I don't see this. I don't want Jeff making up, making up my aspects of, of, of what I see the job. I, I would like to remind you that our mission statement, I don't know who wrote our mission statement, but it exists on the town computer. The Hamilton Planning Board is actively involved in all aspects of land use. And that has not been the case in the last few years. And the object of serving on this board is to be involved in all aspects of land use. Yet you talk about taking the right hand of this board and eliminating a position. And, and I, I, I just, I, I don't, I, I see you shaking your head, and then-
I think Michael's giving this representation of the position.
I'll be candid.
If it expands the position, then that person works for the planning board.
Person does not work for the planning board.
See, so there's, there's some-
They, they support the planning board.
What do you mean? You don't, you're not in the position, you're not supposed to make policy.
I'm not making policy.
And you're not going to determine whether this board needs help or not, that's not your job.
I-
No, the town needs help.
May I step in?
Please.
Well, I'm just waiting.
Go ahead.
So, right now, in the model that Christine reports to Michael, but supports the planning board, the idea is that this-
Let me, let me just stop, I'll, I'll let you, let you go on, but let me put this. How can she possibly work for two bosses?
She doesn't-
Doesn't have-
That's what, that's what, that's the, that's what happens right now.
That's the problem, yes, I think she ought to work totally for the planning board, all right?
The, the planning board is not, the board is not a legal entity that employs. You have, I mean, it's the town that employs staff. You do not have a separate EIN, you do, I mean, you are not a, a corporate entity unto yourself. The town is.
We are an entity unto ourselves, we're established by Massachusetts law.
Yeah, statutory responsibility, but that doesn't make you a separate corporate entity. It makes you a separate political entity.
I think it's some semantics here, though, because technically she works for the town, for Michael, but she serves us, so to speak, in her job description.
And it's irrelevant, as long as she-
But that's actually exactly what we're proposing.
So, so what I'm thinking is, maybe what we need to do is talk among ourselves at our next meeting about this, and come to a consensus before we send anything along, because otherwise-
Let's do it as a group.
It won't be as meaningful, I think.
Right. So, in, in the interim, in the interest of efficiency, if we have specific comments on the language of the position, roles and responsibilities, what I'm suggesting is forward them to Jeff.
Yeah.
So Jeff can try and synthesize those, or at least bullet the key issues or concerns, so that when we sit down and have this discussion, we can focus on a specific document.
Do you think, is it possible to get this draft electronically so we can?
I said that already.
Do you have it?
No, it comes as a PDF, and it cannot-
We don't want it as a PDF, if we could wordsmith it through Word, by-
It'd be a lot easier to have it electronic.
If Michael sends the original to you, and then we mess around with the words.
Okay, thanks.
But, so-
You want to take the word coordinate out, for example.
So, do we have the consensus that the comments we make will go to Jeff?
Yes.
Okay.
I second that.
Should we, should we, just so we're legal and all, doing all the right public things?
Jeff, what do you, what do you feel? I'm, I'm willing to do it, and, and the thing is, as everybody I'm sure here understands, if I get seven different views on what something should be, there, there's no consensus, and I'll, I'll come back and we'll, we'll talk about it. If there's a consensus among, say, five out of seven people, that this particular description is a good one, then we can at least have it in a document, just sort of foundation to move forward with. And I'm, I'm happy to do that.
I, I understand, I mean, and I'll try and incorporate, and make this as robust as possible, but we may not include everything, and that doesn't mean that it's not inherent in the position. It's that, you know, I've got, I've got to make sure this-
Is readable.
Fits, is readable. So, you know, I, I want to incorporate as much as possible that, that is meaningful. If there are other things, it doesn't mean that, that don't get specifically spelled out in as robust detail as you may want to, doesn't mean that that's not implicit in the, in the, the design of this.
Well, this will be our input, it's your document, am I right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I, I get that one.
Just so procedurally, we're following public disclosure process, should we send those to you, and that you forward them to Jeff?
No, you, you-
You can send them to Jeff, as long as you do not add everybody else's email in more-
Don't do copy all.
Don't do, send one email to Jeff, not with all the other members of the board. And in general, that would be a better procedure for many of you to follow.
Okay.
If you don't keep communicating with the whole-
Right, and no talk back.
Right, it, it's just, it's one, it's a one-way. You're sending your personal comments to Jeff, and he's going to compile them by themes, things that match, great, things that don't, he's going to bring back to your board to finish discussing.
Right, okay.
How long is this going to take us to do this merchandising?
Two, two, two weeks, probably.
You've got a couple of big public hearings coming up, so I, I hope not too many.
Yeah.
You've got two big applications coming in in March, and Canterbrook, on top of Canterbrook.
Shall we move on?
Yeah, and what, we're going to talk about the RFP?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Let's take-